We're calling the regional school committee to order. Not that we're being recorded. Any public comments? No public comments. Correspondence? We received another detailed email from a well-informed resident concerning the high school campus discussion and also an email concerning the Concord Middle School discussion. So next, we're going to hold business. Campus feasibility study.
We're checking on the status of the Gail folks who are due here any minute. So we can talk in general before that certainly. So or we could go out of order and expect they're coming in. We're checking with them now.
Well, so we are. I mean, we got the next thing is the warrant articles, which would be.
They should be hard to do without.
Right. We've done the budget, right? We've approved the budget articles. So we're just looking at.
How about if we move to more.
Calendar.
You get calendar or policies.
Calendar.
So we can get some of that out of the way.
Get that stuff done.
I think technically you need to vote. Move correct.
I would move to move directly to action items on the agenda until our guests for the old business arrive.
Second.
Second. For both.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
For both.
For both.
Okay, so now we'll discuss the school calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2019-2020. Actually, somebody should do it for both, shouldn't they? For the school calendar.
Oh, yes. I will make a motion for both committees to approve the 2019-2020 school calendar as recommended by the calendar committee.
Second?
For both?
For both.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
No, my only comment was, I think it was nice not to have a lot of emails and comments on it, right? This is a pretty uneventful schedule and we're in draft form in Carlisle and it's the same start day. I think the end day is off by one, so it's nicely in sync so far.
That's great.
And we don't take for granted the work that went into this by people here and not here tonight, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That is a tremendous amount of work you continue to do. It's great.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so we could move on to vote for the school committee policies?
Should we approve the calendar for both? Did we just do that?
We didn't.
No, that's true.
I'll make a motion.
My motion and the second were for both, but you probably need to do a.
Let's vote individually.
Okay, all those in favor for Concord?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks.
Can I have a motion to approve the school committee policies? Yes, Lister?
I will move for both committees to approve policies JFABC, JFABD, JFAVE, JFABF, and JFBB.
Second for both?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, for both.
No, for, well, for Concord. All those in favor for Concord?
Aye.
We can do this. Come on, we can do this.
Yeah. We've said it before.
Should we? Should we go to the.
Go to the building workers contract?
High school warrant articles?
No.
No, no, I would skip to the.
But I'll vote to approve the CCRSD Building Service Workers Contract for the period of 2018 to 2021.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, when you guys went back and made the edits that we discussed in our last executive session.
Correct.
That's the only change.
That's the only change, yes.
Okay, great.
Thanks for your work on this.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good point.
Great work.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve three CCHS field trips. One is January 19th Nordic Ski Team Training Trip to Jackson, New Hampshire, February 1st US Squash High School National Championship in Hartford, Connecticut, and April 19th Softball Mystery Trip. I'm not going to say where it is. Because it's a mystery. Because it's a mystery. With the condition that we receive a signed district liability insurance waiver from opportunities.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should we redo it German?
Yeah, that's right.
Don't tone ten.
We take a should, right?
We could do.
There's a wire.
There's a Concord one. Donations.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
Move to the Concord action items that are donations?
Yeah, they can do that.
To an entertaining motion that the Congress School Committee voted to accept CPS Enrichment Fund donations in the amount of $512.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just a little clarification. The 500 is a donation from a family. This is the preschool account that we're talking about. The other 12 is some of the take they're going to get off of the bins that we've put in or collecting. So those are the proceeds from the clothing recycling and all is going to the PTGs. So you're just voting in there, I guess, November intake from that bad effort. So but the 500 from the families, definitely noteworthy and with great gratitude.
Definitely with thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have to go. They're imminently going to walk in, so we can start our conversation and then they can join us. So we are looping back to where we left off in the discussion of the campus and the warrant articles. We've done quite a, had a lot of conversation with Gail, so when they get here, they'll be very versed in any of the residual questions that we had. I think some of the things to settle on are priorities, discussion of the warrant articles, and we can determine how you want to approach that and whether we're. We've had a lot of discussion with each other and with some of you and with community members about definitiveness of the articles and certainly I know we talked on the middle school factor, so I don't know that we can separate all of those tonight. I will leave that up to all of you. But that's sort of the circular conversation we were having was that the greatest considerations for the high school were what emerged from the feasibility study relative, I think, most likely. There's John. The paving work on the Beatty Road, the need for parking.
Want to come sit with us yet, John? We're just starting to talk about that.
And then I guess the competing factor or not competing factor, depending how you choose to look at it, is the middle school feasibility study. You voted the operating budgets, so those are set. Those articles are all determined. It's really these capital articles that are the discussion tonight. So that's where we left off. John's here after doing more work over the past week. So I turn it over to you from there before we start debating?
Sure.
Yeah, great, thank you.
I also, as you mentioned, we did a few revisions and updates, I guess.
No, why don't you do all of that?
And I feel we absolutely.
Perfect.
I updated the presentation I made last week too.
Okay.
If you want to plug that in.
Yeah, that'd be fantastic.
Take me a second.
I'm trying to remember. I know we had questions last week. I know there's one about the light. I'm trying to at least understand what we learned this week.
Yeah, so the topics we've been talking about with them even as, like daily, the lights at the parking, if we're putting parking in, are we lighting it? Drainage of the parking was a substantial discussion and making sure we can delineate process and cost of that versus just putting asphalt down. Was there a third?
Yeah.
Oh, and making sure we have funds for engineering fees to do the full-fledged design work that needs to be done because, as you'll recall, we can't apply for any kind of permits until the designs are made. So we need that, those funds available to start that.
Design fee funds.
Yeah, so for the high school, that's probably $75,000, $100,000 worth of design work to be done. So making sure that that's all encumbered in this, these numbers we're looking at. I know they also have updated their numbers and I'll be honest, we're going to look at them with you because they updated them at late this afternoon and we've been doing other things, so we're all going to have a conversation together. All yours, John, when you're ready.
Yes. Okay.
Just big picture before we start in, John, if you don't mind. Does this report here and what you presented tonight effectively eclipse what we did last week? So we leave that behind effectively for the next conversation?
Yeah, it's an update.
It's not A, B, it's A again?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
The new and improved A.
Yes, definitely.
Good.
Yeah, so what we did last week, we had some kind of some good comments and last week we came here and I wasn't able to attend, so apologies, but we presented our draft, initial draft, we had some good feedback, good comments, and one thing that wasn't in there was an estimate for engineering fees. And then another thing we did was, since we're in such an early, from early stage, we increased the contingency from 10% to 15%. Does the microphone work? We can't really hear it. Hello? Hello?
There you go, that's working.
Yeah, that works.
Can you hear that?
I heard something.
Not yet. I can try to speak as loudly as I can.
Do you want to just grab one of these? I know it's awkward, but.
Take one of ours.
You can sit there. It's easier. Or hold that one.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, there we go. So, yeah, I can talk about this if you want to stay.
Yeah.
So what we did was, we got some good feedback and we added in the engineering estimates. We added that in as, you know, we haven't provided a hold or anything like that yet, so we added in just about 10% of construction budget for design fees. To be conservative, we increased the contingency from 10% to 15% just because we weren't in the early stage of doing the actual engineering at this point yet, so it's a good idea to increase the contingency a little bit higher at this point. And then there were, I think, a couple of questions on drainage, was the drainage included in the parking lot number? And how we came to the conclusion of the parking lot number was, we have, you know, past projects where we've done parking lots and we'll add up all the costs, get the total and decide by how many parking spaces were there? And usually it's something between $2,500 and $3,000 per parking space. So that's how we came to our initial numbers. We used $3,000 per parking space, so that would include, you know, some aspect of drainage and lights as well. But in this case, we did add in, since last week, another line item for drainage and lighting because, you know, we are talking about some special conditions with soils being what they are in the site in Currie's area and we might need to do some different things with drainage. We added another line item there just to be even just a little more conservative. So I think we're in good shape there. Those are the three main things that we updated. Since then, we also looked at the option with the traffic in the parking lot and we had 425 spaces in the parking lot here. And we took another look at some of the grading and, as I said, the tension basin down here that we were overlapping a little bit and there's some slope issues, so we actually, and we were aware that 120-foot radius would be a more ideal than 115 we have there before. So actually that helped us. It fits and it shortened it up a little bit. So we were able to push that parking lot to the north a little bit to get it out of the tension basin area and to get it completely out. We actually shaved off some of the parking spaces from 125 to 104. So that's what's shown tonight. It was probably a little more realistic. I know along the way we were talking about we can get somewhere between 15 and 10 parking spaces. It's got to be, you know, good. So that's what we have. We updated all the cost estimates accordingly. That modification really changed the pervious area calculations and all. We were very, 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 very conservative. That's really the update from what we've done. If you would like, it's just kind of a zooming range of that layout option. And all the other options are the same. We have the same energy building. We haven't modified that since last week at all. And then the other option with the skater and the field house, I don't know if I would say any question, no matter who I was. Let's skip right into the updated cost of numbers.
Yeah, go right into the costs.
Yes, that's okay.
So this is the updated summary. We do have all the breakdowns as well. And the fact that I passed around have all the breakdowns as well. Just do want to give you that level of detail. So you can see they all increased because we all, we added 10% to each one of those items. We added, we bumped up the, can you see, 1050. We had a couple of little line items here and there. We, for the most part, they're all just a good piece added out of both.
And when you said on parking in terms of increasing to accommodate for drainage and lighting there, the initial numbers that you used, you were saying it was kind of by space, which would have included some budget already for drainage and lighting. You added some more, so does it, is it now broken out such that the parking space number is purely the spaces without drainage and then the cost for drainage is?
We kept it at the 3,000 per parking space.
Kept it as is and then just added some extra?
And we add a little bit of extra for each of those items.
Okay.
Just to be on the safer side.
So it's, okay, so it's to make it more conservative and.
Yes.
I think it's, it's, yeah, because it's critical that whatever we ask for is enough if we're going to ask.
Exactly. Oh, completely agree, yes.
Yeah, we didn't want to be, you know, over conservative or ridiculous with our numbers, but we want to be, I think, on the higher end.
Better be on the high end.
So then how does number five, site irrigation, play into the numbers that we're looking for? When you tell me that 4P is 80 spaces and it includes the drainage, then what is site irrigation or is that?
Yep, so I can, you know, I'll just do all that. So basically, each one of these, starting with number, they're all individual from each other.
Right.
So number one is the access road. If you want to do that as a separate project, that's, you know, what the estimate would be in. All of these two, if you bid them, if you bid some of these together, if you bid the access road and the traffic field together, you'll probably see better numbers with it because you won't have, you know, two.
Two crews from the drainage.
Yeah. Mobilizations and things like that. But again, being slightly conservative, if you want to do them all separately, that's the number. So the access road is a project. The amenities building by the grandstand would be a project. The traffic field would be separate. And then getting the parking lot, so we have the one, so this is what's a little bit tricky. The one where we show 104 spaces, that road is a track. If you want to do that option, that would go with the track. The one with the 80 spaces, that would go with one of the built links and skating type building just because the space is different.
Right.
And again, we might, once we get into engineering, it's 80 versus 104. So, you know, maybe it's 90 or maybe it's 105 or something like that. So those are, we just broke it up separately just to show the difference. And then the site irrigation, that's on its own and that's. Just as a recap, the baseball fields right now aren't irrigated, so there's a challenge with getting the water supply to them. So in the green space around the perimeter of the school currently is not irrigated. It wants to be irrigated. So what that number is, is a separate irrigation project. If you are putting a well probably somewhere near the baseball fields, timing it to be just an irrigation system is running a bit more to the school perimeter and watering all of that in as well.
Yeah, my concern was that we might need to be tired to putting in a parking lot or a track, but we don't necessarily.
Right. And then if we, if we end up doing, like a grass field inside of a track over there, you know, we need that irrigation and maybe they share some of that contingency so we figure out the cost of getting the irrigation. You know, it's a matter of, yeah, we're already bringing irrigation over here, then we just have to run another few hundred feet to get it on the field, but we are carrying a number for irrigation with the track cost down towards the end there. So if we carry like 40, it's 43,000 for irrigation within the grass field if we did that. So I think that there's probably enough play in those numbers to, if you want to do both of those things, then.
Joanna had said last time, should we be putting a conduit?
If we, you know, because we don't know if we're in the field.
Should there be a conduit running while we do the construction?
Conduit running if we do the pavement.
Yeah, if you just do the irrigation, you want a conduit for the.
Potential.
For the drainage for the track.
To source the track.
Yeah.
To source the potential track later in case.
Yeah, or at least think about it. I mean, if you want to take up the road now, you want a conduit to take up the road later.
Yeah, we don't want to dig it up later if we, if we do pavement, so.
Yeah, okay.
Right, if we're digging now anyway.
Right.
I have a question. The, if you just do a division exercise, 104 spaces here works out to 70, $7,458 a space versus 80, which works out to 6,959. It seemed to me it would be more per space for fewer spaces.
Yeah, possibly. That probably has something to do with the math, with the, you know, 10% yield and profit that, and we have the same number in there of mobilization or utilization. So there's some nuances in there that if you're just dividing out the total by the amount.
Yeah, but those numbers that are the same, because the number for the 104 to be lower per space, it's higher by $500, which is 50,000. Is there an explanation for that?
It's really, I mean, approximate at this point. It's, I think it's very close. Again, we're using the $3,000 per space for each of them to get to that, you know, kind of baseline number and then adjusting from there what we think, you know, light fixture costs, what we feel fairly to be there. We're putting in these itemized plans and then we can engineer them later, but I think that the, I think the cost is there.
I mean, that makes some sense as an estimate. They're starting at a base of the same price per space and then you're adding things like contingency and soft costs and everything that are more for the bigger lot. If we bid, if we bid it out, I'm sure we would end up with economies of scale, but.
Those are just percentage numbers, so that, that wouldn't be the.
Well, true, but.
Okay. And the ratios are very different, comparison except for parking.
Right, right.
Parking ratio is the same, every other ratio is quite different. So.
Like, if you look at, for example, how many light fixtures do we build? You know, we carry nine for the 400 space lot, eight for the 80 space lot. So maybe it's, you know, maybe we need six or seven for the 80 space lots that are nine. Again, that's something that will work out when the engineering takes place. But for now, I was trying to capture that cost.
Shouldn't we at some point be having a conversation about whether, sorry, should we be having a conversation at some point about whether, because the necessary parking for the day is not the necessary parking for the night? In other words, could that be a daytime lot? Do we need to light it? I'm not sure we've thought that through.
Well, nighttime starts at like 4:15 in the winter. I think that's, that was my, that was my concern.
Are there building toll requirements that require lighting at a parking lot?
Um, no, not necessarily. It depends on, you know.
I mean, safety is number one. I grant you that.
Yeah.
I simply want us to have a conversation.
Yeah, so I, that's why I asked it last time because I was like, school, basically a school day is not over for many kids at, at a start.
They come in or later.
Or when they come in, yeah.
Probably from the building.
Yeah.
I'm satisfied.
Makes sense.
Good question.
Brian says there are requirements. We need to have some kind of lighting.
Lighting, all right.
Depending on where we are.
If, if you, when you walk out there at nighttime, it's certainly a daytime lot and.
Right. Parking lot lighting with independent solar generation is not unusual anymore. Is that something we are considering? I don't know the cost factor. Where there's photovoltaic on top of every light.
Right. We haven't considered it, but we could certainly put it on the list of options.
I don't want to spend a lot of time, but I think that's necessary diligence on our part. Somebody's going to ask us about.
I think once we start to, yeah, once we decide all the things.
If we decide, yeah.
I think, yeah, you're absolutely right. You start to research what is effectively the most cost effective options for all of the light drainage.
Could we, could we offhand, John, your sense on whether the cost would be some great, different by some great magnitude? We did that?
I think the number we have in there for, for lighting per hole is, is quite conservative, actually, so.
So we'd be okay?
I think that we'd be okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So I.
Go ahead.
No, no, Mary, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask the process question because we're looking for money for construction, correct? For whatever we do, not just design?
Right.
Right. Which is our typical.
Right, right, right. No, I just, I'm just, frankly, I'm disappointed that we have a lot, these numbers, some of these numbers got considerably higher and I understand some of the factors why, but this, it feels like some of this information should have, you should have had in last week's report and maybe it was just too early. Like, things like lighting a parking lot and drainage and, and, you know, like, our parking lot went from 486,000 to 775. That's huge. And I, I don't know about any of you, but I am not an expert on this stuff and we're relying on Gail to tell us what are the right things to consider here and what are, what are good numbers. And I feel like that number just went crazy. And I'm trying to understand why.
I think a lot of that number.
We need, we need good numbers.
No, no, it's a good point.
I think it's a good question. A lot, a lot of it has to do with, we didn't have, you know, the 10% engineering fees in there for any of it, so that's, that's completely new.
So why not? Let me just ask. I'll be a jerk here. Why not? Why wasn't that in last week? Why weren't those higher?
Well, we were only considering construction costs.
Okay.
So we had, usually when we do a cost estimate, it's for construction. You want to know what it's going to cost for construction. And then we're going to, we go on to ask for designing and construction money at the same time. Oftentimes those are broken out separately.
Yep.
You know, we'll get involved with design before the construction ever. So just mentally, that's typically how we do it.
Okay.
So we add that back in. And then, yes, the drainage, that's a new item in there. And again, that 3,000 per spot that we typically carry, like I said before, that typically covers some drainage, but again, to consider kind of the special aspects of where that parking lot's going and, you know, we should have had something in there initially that I think the, I almost forgot last week.
And, and you weren't here last week, John, but that, that was one of my initial questions last week was like, is this, everything I've heard about this campus is how unique it is, right? And especially the landfill area. So I was trying to understand how you came to the cost estimates, whether they're sort of generic based on typical construction costs or unique to our campus. And it sounds like there's a lot more reflection on what's unique here, like in terms of drainage.
Yeah, and, you know, we, we definitely are taking into account the, specifically the landfill area there. You know, for example, the, for the kind of track area, we considered the topography, we considered the fact that we want to try to build up over that a little more, so we got a line item in for bringing in about 7,500 yards of fill material to level that out. We think we'll need a retaining wall.
In the newer, I'm sorry, in today's estimate, you're saying that got out?
Last.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, yeah.
That was in there. We think we'll need probably a retaining wall below rent to do that, to fill that up. We have the number, so we have, estimates here, all soil management, knowing that we'll have some in the face with the material below the cap probably. We don't know exactly how much at this point, but it will be cost for that. So we could take a look at a lot of the nuances of this site. I think at this point, we've captured probably a few errors since last week.
You know, just in terms of process and even one thing specifically with the lighting. Back when we first started talking with them, we were so focused on not penetrating the landfill cap. And it looked like most of the parking, the goal of the parking was to be on top of the impervious surface on the landfill cap that it was directing us in that way to say, if we have to penetrate the cap, then we can't light the lot. And I think we did have to go back and reloop to the fact that the things had shifted. So there were some options there that weren't there before. So a lot of this is because it's been such an ongoing dialogue of trying to consider all of the variables and the factors. I mean, I know, I know that's the story of the lighting, that when we first met with them, we said, well, if you can't, if you have to penetrate the cap, the lights, the lights aren't a priority. We won't park it, park anybody there at night. Obviously, we've come a long way from that to realize we have other sets of choices, which is good news. But I think it moved numbers as the discussions happened, so.
That is where we started.
That is where we started, yeah. So that, that I think explains one piece of it.
So how do we get the lights? How do we get the, what were they, eight or nine? Nine light fixtures on?
How are you putting the lights in, John?
You, well, we can penetrate that cap. We just need to involve an LSP and document the soil management. That's why we had, you know, some, some of these numbers inflated a little bit to handle some of that soil. So we can actually auger down and put the foundation in. Once you put the foundation base in, that basically seals the, the material back up. Which is that management of the soil that you take out, you truck offsite, so it can be done. It's just a reserve step here.
And the lights have to be sited where there is a cap? Could they be on the sides of the?
Right, so, I mean, usually they're in the island, the parking lot or the perimeter, or that's something that will certainly be worked out.
I mean, much of the cap, the, the parking lot we're talking about is not in, on the landfill. For what that's worth, but yeah, they're, it's regulated by code, so they're islands. You put them in the island, I mean.
Yeah, the green border here, that's the, that's the cap, that's the AOL area.
Right.
The pink is the old parking lot, so a good amount of our parking lot is not within that, which is, which is nice.
I mean, it might be worth, you know, in our further investigation, just something different where those lights are in the cap. I mean, if it's temporary or something else, but.
And even if they put them in center islands, would we be in the cap?
Yeah.
So they could put, you know, dual head fixtures right down the center, then we'd be in the cap.
Right, so we should design it around it, probably.
Exactly, exactly.
Because it's not too much.
We might only get away with just, you know, double head fixtures, like you said, right, in the center islands. And if we make them a little bit taller, you know, they'll both spread the light a little bit further. We're looking for the parking lots to see how tall they can be lights and roll the photometrics.
Last time we little parking lot, this teeny light did a lot.
Depends on what kind you do. I mean, someone are designed to kind of spill out a little bit, someone designed to just go straight currently down to have that cut off.
I guess the one other thing I'll say that's been very different in this process than other projects is we've been very public with each iteration of what they've been working on. Where typically, it, it's not a public discussion. We give them feedback and they go back and do, and you don't see all of the ways it progresses. So I think it feels a little different to you because you're not always part of that evolution. And there were very good reasons to be part of that this time. I think it just feels different because you've been part of the ups and downs of the changes rather than getting a package at the end.
I should mention as well, I was having a few discussions with our geotechnical and environmental consultant that we have on our team for this project. And specifically relating to the landfill area and the, and the options that we're presenting here. And quickly, it's going to be on our final report as well, but quickly, just to mention that. The option that shows the building, like a skating rink or fuel house. It has, you know, mostly soils and geotechnical considerations for foundations. But it also has considerations from an environmental standpoint typically. Although the AOL does not preclude us from frame building there, you know, they are probably be allowing to do it.
DNP.
May have objection to having a building where there are people occupying that for a good portion of the day. Just based on, you know, there are other places you could put that building that are not in a, you know, landfill, cornfield, hazardous area. So that'll be a consideration if we were going to go ahead and consider any sort of building there.
But that would not be the case for a potential track?
Correct.
Because it's not a building. It's just a little track.
No one's going to sit there on that.
Right.
Exactly, it's, it's, you know, you're, you're, you're there for a couple hours. You're outdoors, you're not indoors. We have quality issues and things like this. For the track and field, you know, recreation is one of the items that the AOL specifically does allow and emphasizes. So that would be a good use there. We would have to, you know, be sure, be careful with the geotechnical parameters there as well. Again, we are budgeting to bring in a good amount of clean fill. We have a lot of item in there for a geotechnical stabilization kind of there. Because you could still have, I mean, even though the ash has been there for years and years and years in the parking lot, there are still potentials for a little sediment. You know, issues here and there. So we would try to stabilize that base well and good. I think it's, it's definitely viable option to do that. And the parking lot, although the majority of the parking lot's out of the AOL area. Speaking of our environmental consultant, parking lots are something that DNP actually does like on these areas because it's kind of even more of a, really definitive cap. You know, you pave it and it's really no way anyone's going to be accessing that material underground. Although that has the same kind of geotechnical issue as well, you know, potential settlement in the future. So we, we want to build that up a little bit. But I think that the option we have here with the track in the parking lot, parking lot being mainly out of the landfill area, is the best of both worlds, if you will. Can I foresee, you know, drainage, probably going, a lot of infiltration type chambers possibly going under the parking lot area outside the AOL. We can possibly infiltrate what we can. We can understand it's pretty decent soil over here. It's potential to infiltrate and then you overflow the, in the basement, so. We put some positive.
I have a quick question on another part of this, related to lighting, which is the lighting along the access drive. So back in, in project one, the access road. It's helpful that the lighting there is now broken out. I think it wasn't broken out specifically before, so that's helpful to see. And the question is actually more probably to Lori and Jared and Brian, but the lighting, it says lighting along access road. Is that the only place we need lighting or did I remember, did we also need lighting, more lighting in existing parking lots or no? Is that all taken here?
No, just on the.
It's only on the road that we need lighting. Okay, go.
And any sidewalks won't change? Are thinking about that.
Right, we'd be, well, when they're actually proposing moving the lighting to the side where the sidewalk is, so if we come up the road, it would be where the sidewalk is.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Also, also on number one, if I read this correctly, this assumes that we elect a, a berm. And is that in lieu of guardrail or curb? So it's picking one of the three options. Do you see the two without, without cost?
Timber guardrail and.
Look at the two items.
Curving with granite.
Costs. And then we have thirty-two K in the middle, and so we're choosing one of three options. Is that accurate?
What we've carried here is, I think what we've had over the years is to keep on a berm. And we are showing and replacing that, not doing new curving, not doing new.
Just so we know what we're getting into.
Right.
Because we do now have some guardrails up there.
Yes, we do, and we do have grant curving in certain areas, so.
So at some point, not tonight, we need to be very mindful of what we're not choosing and choose something here.
Essentially assumes that the curving that's there would stay, even if the, the guardrails there would stay. If that needs to be, let me take another look at that, if that needs to be replaced. But we went out to our assessment and, and see the, the need to do that. It's more the actual pavement that would really be important.
Right, correct.
So Lori, you.
Sorry, just a quick follow up on the lighting question. I know you broke out the lighting. I just want to clarify that, that was in the plan before, correct? And it, but it was just, it was built all into it. And so now the two twenty for lighting is just broken out? It's, or is it a new cost?
I thought the light was.
From car.
It was in the other one.
In the access road. Oh, it was there. Oh, sorry. Okay, sorry, sorry. Was it that one? I didn't realize it was two twenty. Okay, sorry, my bad. Oh, that's the old one. It is there. Sorry, never mind. I was looking at the wrong, at a, an old one.
No, that's, I, I think we have to be careful.
Yeah. No, I was comparing to the wrong thing. Okay, sorry, never mind.
But this speaks to Lori's point that we're tracking this.
Right, exactly. Which usually we wouldn't be doing.
We're watching events unfold with, what, a little, a little more care and attention than would normally be the case because we're debating as we go.
There you go. Okay. So sorry about the.
No, no, it's fine. So we're trying to end up with a couple of numbers here, right? The access road and the parking. It seems like the parking, the hundred and four parking spaces are compatible with the track, so that there's no problem with putting that in the wrong place, so to speak. So should we maybe concentrate at this point on trying to get some solid numbers on those two? Because those are going to be part of the warrant article, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think John's here giving you the, the solid numbers as he can tonight. That's.
Well, and that was their.
We vetted these pretty thoroughly at this point.
That was their promise. It would be, it would be a range. It would be estimate.
Yep, and it would be this week, so.
I don't know, but it was an estimate. It's not, hasn't been added yet or anything. Yeah. And I don't think we.
But that's not predicated on the fact that we're going to do a track, because that hasn't been determined.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, I just want to clarify that for the record.
Not, you know.
Only that we're not including a track.
Well, I think it's moving towards the conversation about what the article looks like and what we want to include in it.
Yep.
Right, right. Article or articles. Just to throw it out.
Yeah, that's right. That's, that comes next.
Just keeping it real, you know?
So I mean, I, I propose we have a serious discussion about what the article, what we want to include in the article and articles, if you dare.
If I may, just, so those two numbers are good as far as you're concerned, right? One point two two million for the access road.
You know, our fate is in Gail. We spent a lot of time with them in the past couple of months.
Right.
And they're very responsive to what our next questions are. And I feel like it's been as thorough as it could be in this amount of time.
And seven seventy-five for the parking lot.
For instance, Gail gave us.
I'm just confirming, so we're all kind of on the same. Okay.
Page.
Go ahead. You're next.
No, all I'm, I'm just suggesting we move our conversation to what do we want to include if we want to have a district capital project article? And if so, what people feel we should do.
I'd like to debate the merits of the access road, number one. The parking lot, one oh four spaces, number two. And the site irrigation, number three. Those three, I think, require discussion.
Could, could we get a sense from Brian and Jared and Lori about the, the urgency for site irrigation? And how you feel the urgency, if that's something that needs to be, I don't want to lose sight of the amenities building, which we've said we keep in our conversation, but also site irrigation?
So I would not put that in the same category as the paving and the parking. I think it's a item we hope to rectify down the road here at some point because we're kind of holding our breath. Things don't die off when we can't irrigate adequately. But to comparatively put that next to getting that road in good shape and relieving the parking stress, it's not the same category of need at all. So that should stay on the radar for down the road. Should there be the right time and opportunity and see how it, and the weather's out here another year, so. It was important to get, make the need known, to say we're struggling a bit with that, but I would not put it in that same category.
So we don't kill off trees and grass and all that? That's, I mean.
I don't think it's that we don't have irrigation.
I don't want to be penny wise and powerful, which that's, you know, that, that.
Yep, um, the irrigation plan is gotten us to these four years, so they can argue with me if they want in public if you think things are going to die off, but.
I mean, we, we just can't tell. I mean, we could have rainy seasons and, you know, we could lump this in with the amenities building. The irrigation could be lumped in the amenities building. So that when we're down there working, we do everything down there at one time.
That would make some sense.
So that's to do with the area twice, so.
Yep, that would make some sense. I also, to me, again, I'm going to keep jumping in with the Bush perspective that loops in the middle school that we're going to be talking about at CBS. But I just feel like, given all the things that we're potentially asking for this year, that we should limit that, the amount of asks as much as we can. And if that's not really high priority, I feel like we look at it next year. My opinion.
So back to Joanna's question, right?
Well, I guess it, I would propose that we consider an article with the loop road in the parking, hundred and four part, space parking lot.
Is, is one word up.
And basically, those two together are about two million.
That's almost exactly two million.
One point two five and seven seventy-five, yeah.
Almost exactly two million.
And again, we have to keep in mind that hopefully these are as conservative and we're, we're actually coming.
Right, hopefully it would be less.
It's, hopefully that scares me.
Well, that's every time. That's every time.
And we, like, to Lori's point, we've been watching as the sausage got made and the numbers. I was appalled at the parking last week and now it's, I'm sixty percent more appalled for twenty percent fewer spaces, but that's what it is.
But if we do it at the same time, there's going to be a little savings there.
Yeah, it should be.
I think I, I mean, honestly, the amount of work that they've done, I'm saying hopefully, like, hopefully it's considerably less. Not hopefully it doesn't go over. That's what I.
Right, that's what I'm thinking.
But.
I think we're to the point, as your team here, to say that we have more confidence tonight that it's not going to go over than we did a week ago, given the work we did this past week, because that is exactly what we have been saying to ourselves, so. Expect their pretty conservative numbers that you will get some savings out of, but we don't want to risk that and come up short in the middle of something.
Right. So it should be this or under, basically.
That's our expectation, yeah. We, I mean, we spent a lot of time on this this last week. That's, I think while you're getting a little sticker shock as we got more conservative.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd just throw out the possibility, since I said or articles, that, that we also consider those two. I think, I agree that those two are the highest priority without doubt. And I'm supportive of both of them. But I would throw out the option of doing them as separate articles purely because of the risk of any controversy over one, taking the other down with it. And that makes me a little nervous.
So can we agree first that we, these are the two we want to discuss?
Yeah, let's get to that.
Yep.
Agree.
Let's at least make sure we're all in agreement on that. And then whether or not we do them together or separately, this is the next conversation?
Yeah. I was prepared to say together, but that was one memory. Forty-eight hundred dollars a space.
But they're not going to be, they're going to be together. It's going to go down.
Yeah.
Well, I do think that, I mean, we added drainage and light fixtures separately and fifteen percent contingency is probably a little high, but my concern is that people look at that number and say, I'm not paying seven grand a space.
Lori could charge that. One year, Walter.
Raise the parking fees to seven hundred dollars a year.
Seven parking.
For that parking lot.
Yeah, right, exactly.
I, I mean, I don't know that that, I mean, I, I don't know that we can just look at, you know, what the payback period is based on the,
It's not monitored.
On the fees, because that's really not what the fees are about.
Absolutely.
And that's not what we're trying to solve here, but I just, I, I think that number is creeping up to a point where it could cause us, it could put, puts more, puts the whole thing at more risk. It's three quarters of a million dollars to park a hundred cars. If you don't feel the pain of the parking, you're not going to like that number.
It's a lot of pain.
Yeah.
And there are far more people who don't understand that pain.
Yeah.
Than who do.
So Heather, that's my concern, is that if you break them up, you don't have your part.
Valid concern. That's true.
And there is an option for anyone to make an amendment, so it's not like, you know.
Any appetite for the amenities building, since we're going to be in a place that we need to do that fairly? I know the town has said, you know, they'll wait, but, but that's a, I mean, that has a fair amount of benefit to the community, right? Doing, I mean, during games and all that stuff.
I think, I think it does. I think it has value, but would we put it above the others? I don't know.
We don't know above, so that's, yeah.
Right, and can we take the others off?
Because if we have to do it next year and, you know, depending on what happens this year, and then we're looking to do an amenities building, let's say, next year, what, you know, I'm just thinking ahead, right?
Right, and what's out there.
What's that going to feel like if you're building a new middle school?
Right, if you're asking.
I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Because if you go, if you go with the amenities building and the irrigation next year, you're back at two million again next year.
And I think my motive for bringing up site irrigation was not unlike yours. We have to at least look at what's never going to go away. We do get to choose whether this, the town gets to choose whether it wants a track. The town will get to choose whether it wants a hockey rink. I think ultimately, it's, it's already, already been determined that the town expects, and the state expects the amenities building. Towns, excuse me. And, and the, uh, town expects us off-town water with some irrigation that will never, ever go away. But I'm back to Lolly's point, too.
That doesn't mean town meetings are gonna vote to fund it.
No, precisely, no, I, I agree, I agree. Let's turn just for a moment to the ring road and what that school improvement does for the town facility there. Is there any tie-in with BD, any benefit, or is it?
I would have to say yes, I was driving through there this afternoon, and honestly, you can't tell the difference between the speed bump and the potholes, because it's like, so like this, you know?
We don't need speed bumps.
I have to say it's a benefit to, it's well beyond the high school community, um, it's in desperate need of it in there, I think we're hitting the end of that.
When we look at, when we look at sheer numbers, who uses what? BD is another resource where whatever we do is gonna serve a lot of citizens from, from both towns.
I mean, I feel like, I, I guess I just feel like the access road and the lighting are, are a no-brainer, we have to do it.
Yeah, yeah, it's really, really.
And we've put it off several years to the point of, you know, those things that aren't gonna go away, that we've kicked the can down the road a couple times. And, and that's, that's one where we're at the end of that line, we just have to do it. And it's a safety thing, it's a benefit to all the town, it, you know, it's, there, there's almost no debate, um, we need to do it. And to add something else that could be a big debate, that could risk that, I just feel is really risky. And I'm thinking the middle school, too.
But I think you have to.
And I have, right, that's, I mean, that's part of the, the thinking, is we're also gonna be in Concord at least, we will also be, potentially, depending on the discussion later.
Wait, so you haven't had a Concord school committee meeting since last week, right?
No, well, at the end of.
No, we're gonna have the one tonight after.
No, that's what I, I didn't, I didn't.
Right, at the end of that meeting, we did, though.
So, you still don't know where you are?
We still don't know where we are, but actually, after our last regional meeting adjourned.
Oh, that's right, you had a comment, yeah, yeah.
Concord met, so we did have one since our last joint discussion, and that's a good point, I should, I should update it.
Dare say what?
I mean, the discussion last week had most of us saying that seemed like a pretty good idea to at least submit a placeholder warrant article for a feasibility study. We haven't taken that vote yet, and a couple people had questions and wanted to discuss it a little more. But if I was to summarize the general feeling in the meeting here, it was generally, this is probably a good idea, let's talk about what would happen next, and how we would proceed over the next four months and that sort of stuff. Anybody can add to that if, if you want or disagreeing? I mean, my guess is that there's a good chance that when the five of us vote tonight, that, that there's a good chance that we will submit a warrant article for a feasibility study. We'll have to have that discussion still, but.
So, Lori, have we seen?
I think I, I like the point that Lori made last time about not taking anything, you know, out of consideration, yet.
Right.
Because we have a lot of work to do, even for the parking cell and the, as much as the feasibility, so, um, I think, I think realistically, it's really gonna be a lot of work. But I think, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor, I'm more in favor of the parking and the ring road and one article, but I would not, you know, that's how, that's just my preference, I think that's a better strategy, but.
And I feel the same way on the other side, I feel like two is a better strategy, but I'm not gonna, if, if we go with one, I'm not gonna vote against it, I, I feel strongly we need to do this, it's only a matter of how.
So, let's put John on the spot, if we were to couple the two together, uh, could we still keep your conservative numbers and also predict any measurable cost savings by aggregating the two? And bring that, were we to bring that to the town meeting?
I see, could you bring that number down, actually, because you know they're together?
Do you bring it to different number?
Yeah.
And then if they get separated at town meetings, the number goes up again, that little bit, but if, if that's a known, we might as well, rather than rate the number.
Right, because if we fund both of them this year, we can bid them out together.
Because we're, we're struggling, we're struggling to bring these numbers down, and we're not struggling with the need, it's the when and the how.
Then you could put some savings.
I'll restate what you said before, not tonight, parking is something that's interfering with the educational mission. If that were not the case, we would not be having this conversation.
It is. Yeah, no, we would not be having this conversation.
If that were not the case, you would not have brought it to our attention again and again and again.
Correct, correct.
So, I'm just curious, any public comments on this discussion? Seeing none, we will continue, so.
Can I make one?
Please, yep, under the microphone.
E V, I'm the president of Walton Terrace, I do, uh, picture out there right now, I live adjacent to the campus, and so I'm very familiar with it. Uh, speaking for myself, I'm a member of the finance committee, but I'm just speaking for myself. All right, having gotten the disclaimers out of the way, my basic question is, if you were to build the amenities building, what would the sewage treatment be for the built, that's a simple question. I believe that there's sewer stub down the tennis courts, just put in, so we'd get time, we would put it, we would put it in a pump station.
So, when the field was turfed, there was some infrastructure put in to, uh, to get sewage, you know, to get over to that space?
What they did is they put a brand-new sewer line, um, down the, the hill that slopes down to the field.
Right.
Um, so the bait, the catch bases go down that way, we can tap into the line there.
See, and pump uphill to get into the.
Yeah, they would probably have to pump uphill, or they could go up and then behind the business bleachers down.
I know where the line is, it's fine, but the point being that you just go up, but you'd go up, it's not a whole pump, it's fine, it's, it's fine, Dave, that's all I need to know, there's a way, there's a way to get it done.
Yes. Yeah. It's more easily creep, go that way, so.
Okay, so we need to make a decision on, uh, one or two articles, and we've had.
Where's everybody else leaning?
Couple of, a couple of different opinions, uh, I'm curious what some, I think we know, you, you pretty well decide that are leaning.
It's six one and a half dozen the other, I mean, the concern is that somebody calls a question before some, if, you know, if it looks like it's gonna get shut down, somebody calls a question before somebody makes an amendment, and then neither one of them get done.
So, I, this, the one thing I think could happen, if we put them together, is that we have time to actually get firmer numbers on the possible cost savings, to your point. Court, that would allow for us to be more informative and informed as we go on our road show and also as we're before town meeting, so that ideally, you know.
We'd have a better, more real number.
Yeah, and they're real, and that there are actually some savings, because you have the same company come and do the same, you know, preparations and mobilization and demobilization. The same company comes and brings its asphalt and.
The more pavement you put down, the better number you get to a square, you know, footage basis. They, they want to be able to put down more pavement all at once, you get a better cost, it's not, weeks and miles better, but it's, it's better. Pre demobilization, we're gonna need two mobilizations for, you know, for Walker project, and so there's some things that are in there.
Does it last longer because you don't have joints also?
The pavement, the parking lot?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I know when you pour concrete, you wanna, you don't want joints, do you want asphalt joints, or do you wanna minimize those? Well, they don't meet, ring road and the parking lot. Yeah, right, yeah.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't put joints, really, they wouldn't have purpose, like, so I could just move that in the parking lot.
Just want continuous pour wherever you can make it.
Right.
Okay.
So, Lori, you had expressed more or less preference to one article, am I correct that this is still the base case?
Yeah, I mean, I have an opinion, I'm not gonna promise you, it's the end-all, be-all opinion.
No, 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 but.
I feel like as a package, if you put the road and the pavement, the parking together, feels like a comprehensive look at finishing the lower campus, all related to vehicles and how we're managing ourselves there, and it seems to me that it becomes a natural extension of the paving to talk parking. I also think it becomes less of a, if you go two articles, you're promising a standalone conversation on the merits of parking. If you put them together, you may or may not have that conversation, depending on the.
You're gonna have it.
I'm sure we're gonna have it, I'm just saying.
But, but it'll be different, though, it'll be different.
But it's, I, yes, my opinion, I'm giving you my opinion, um, I think it's a package, and it feels easier to me to get up and talk about it as a package. Otherwise, I'm up there, and that's the one volunteering to be up there, I'm the one up there really trying to help a community understand the struggles of our very individual kids to some of the points we've made, and I will be ready to do that, and I will do it anyhow. I just, I feel like it becomes extra attended to, because it has to, if, if it's a standalone article.
No, no question.
It has to be a very full conversation just on parking, versus a package just feels like a statement to the community, we wanna just finish the campus and call that project done. But it's just my opinion, there's, I could be completely wrong.
So, Court, I, I agree with what you were saying, that it's an educational issue, the parking. It isn't convenience, it isn't, you know, satisfying a certain part of our community. It's, it's very important for the students to be able to, to travel, especially after school ends. And so, I, I'm leaning in, in the direction of, of having it in one article, because it is, it's, it's, you know, the access road is, is part of the overall stra- traffic configuration, and it has to be upgraded, the sidewalk is in terrible shape, so we're, we're all in agreement with that. And parking is, it does fit in with, you know, the, the whole idea of getting students to, uh, to the school on time, and, and having them be able to follow all their activities after school.
I, I would add that, um, if, if I were part of these meetings and to come to understand this more than I ever thought I'd understand this, and I don't think most people are paying that close attention to this, for whatever reason.
What?
Yeah, um, I think if I stepped back and was just me before school committee going to a town meeting, I would see this as optional. I would see this as, well, we could do the ring road, or do the parking, but let's be careful with our money, and, and I, I can't vote for both. So, I'm just really concerned that, that in the, the five steps away from this very deep information, people are just gonna say, well, you know, we want a new community center, and we gotta vote for that feasibility study, that's in Carlyle, and then we can vote for the parking lot, and then we can vote for the ring road. And so, you know, if I have to pick two, you know, I, I just think it gets, it's just hard for somebody who's not that close to this conversation to see that this is really one project, and I'm afraid you'll lose a vote. I, I'm afraid you'll lose your parking.
That's Lori's job at town meeting, right, I mean, I mean, that's why you just, right?
Yes, that's, that's the charge.
Yeah.
So, Lori, you're good at thinking on your feet. Speaking on your feet.
Because we ask you to want.
Let's pretend it's town meeting.
If, if, if we had to, for the benefit of folks who, to your point, have not been in the room, if the question were reversed, what don't we get if we put off the parking? What don't we get if we put off the ring road? What, what is, what does the school district lose? What do we, what's the cost? We know the, we know the harsh costs of doing it, what are the costs of not doing it?
Um, you know, the parking is student wellness, I think, from our perspective, we've got kids who are stressed about how they're getting to and from school, rather than focusing on education. And I, I will throw the administrative time we are spending on the angst we are creating, which is taking your principal and superintendent away from the educational mission. I will put the kids first above us always, but the time factor is, is there. To, to read the emails we get from the kids, and it's often the kid, it's often parents, but it's just as often the kids who email us and the story of why they need parking, and the way it's impacting them to not be able to park, this past few weeks it's been the hockey teams, because they're all starting their season, and they have no way to get into school from the rink. They just left at six AM, and, um, they'd like us to try to help alleviate the stress of what to do with the car when they arrive at eight o'clock. Our answer was, well, that road down the street, the police don't really watch it, you can hope there's another space there, I mean, we don't have an answer. And we apologize and say we're working on it, so to alleviate what that's doing to our kids, and I'm, in a week, shared a little bit with you of many, many kids in crisis, so I think we have a mission of any place to relieve some stress, we should be. Um, in terms of the ring road, I, we do seem to have a safety issue building here, we've tried to keep up with potholes. Last year, we had, um, a flat tire community member in the pothole that we ended up paying for after the fag, I mean, that's, that's gonna be an ongoing discussion of how we keep up with it. And we are putting money on that, decent money, we put ten or twenty, ten thousand?
Yeah.
Ten thousand to patch potholes last summer, so it is costing us even keep it remotely functional, which starts to beg, putting bad, good money after bad.
And your costs will go up the longer you wait.
Of course, of course, and we're gonna have to do more of that as the road continues to deteriorate, so, um, and we don't wanna be responsible for any particular damage or haven't prevented anything more significant than that, so, um, you know, the road is just at the end of its life, so it, fail, failure to address it becomes more costly in multiple ways down the road, so.
So, what I heard you say, you have, you have, we have, the school district has no answer for this student who comes in in the morning.
We do not have an answer, because when they ask us for parking, if they have not been assigned a spot as a senior in the early part of the school year when we did it, we do not have an answer for these kids.
My support of the parking comes from my, uh, understanding of the justification from the administration, so if they wanna go with one article, I'm good with it.
And I am, too, I clearly heard that's the direction, and I am not gonna fight this wave, I'm with you, so let's do it.
And I just wanna go on record, if it doesn't work, we all don't know the answer quite yet, our job is to sell the message and to convey the need, and then be ready to answer those questions at town meeting and help the, because Christine's completely right, help the folks who haven't been attentive to hear why the need is being asked for. And I think we have solid reasons on both of those projects, which is why I split the irrigation off, because I can't as passionately pitch keeping the field green. But safety and wellness of our kids, I think, are in both of those conversations.
Okay, so what's the actual number we're asking for, we all just said about, about two million, but I didn't.
According to this, is it not about one million nine hundred thousand?
Still.
I can tell you that.
Two five.
We combine these and see, I don't think it's gonna come down, you know, weeks and miles, um, what's, what's the total?
I think it's two million, basically.
Two million, five hundred thousand.
John, I think you should keep, for the January report that's due to us, you should keep doing that work to combine them, we need a number tonight for the warrant article, so. Combine the two you've given us, but if there's savings, that would be good.
I don't, I don't think I would haircut either one of these, based on that going along, because if they end up getting split up, we don't have an appointment.
Be good for information for us to have, if nothing else.
Yeah, yeah, to be able to say, if you do these together, this, we, there is saving, because we are committed to them both together, and that's the original value.
We're saving.
So, if two million isn't enough to do both of these.
Do you have a number? Did you do that?
Two mi- two million five thirty-six.
Two million five hundred thirty-six dollars.
Five million thirty-six dollars, not five hundred.
You could probably go to two thousand. Billion flat.
Oh, that's right, that's correct.
A little bit big sale.
So, two million, five.
Jared says one nine nine, if you want. Sound better.
He must have been in marketing for this.
About a garbage.
So, so, I, I have a really silly little question, we have speed bumps on that road now, other than the potholes, we have speed bumps.
Yes, yes.
I'm assuming that's minor to put them back, because when you pave a road, they like to go faster.
Yeah, 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 you definitely wanna watch the roads.
Come on, it'll be good for donuts.
As a matter of fact, I think there's only one speed bump.
There's one.
Yeah, so we probably wanna have.
Pot holes are not a bad thing.
The potholes are strategically, strategically placed to slow people.
Exactly, yeah.
Some people take their own, favorite streets.
Okay.
Okay, so we're.
So, are we saying two million?
No, one nine nine.
Or one nine nine?
No.
Two millions.
Two million five hundred.
But he said two million will be fine, if that's the case.
Yeah, that, I think that number is gonna confuse people at town meetings, more than it confused people here.
Right, it's good.
Yes. Okay, so, three, two million.
It's gonna sound like two point five million.
It's not gonna be that, it's not gonna be that number anyway.
Oh, it's still, that's a good point.
Yeah, so the five hundred thirty-six dollars, we can, we can handle, hey?
Big sale.
Big sale, done.
That's right.
You guys, you, you, town comes up with two million, we'll come up with five hundred thirty-six.
That's what you said.
So, if, if two million isn't enough, where do we go?
Ring road.
Crazy.
Replanting. John, you're gonna tell me two million's enough, right?
You know, I'm pretty confident on the high end of that and I'm, you know, hopeful that if you bid out those two projects together, they'll come in under that two million dollars.
Okay.
You know, oftentimes, that's kind of a, means insurance, if you will, with bidding projects. We can figure out alternates. We can put a D doc to add alternates. That way, if bids come in a lot higher than we expected, we have things to do. We're deducted and be able to award things. We have the, we have the whole policy of those bidding projects we designed. But if we're getting nervous that we don't have enough, I think that we're, we're pretty good at this point. But it's always a, a nice idea to consider, just in case.
Notwithstanding that, we heard you use the word conservative a number of times, which means you're trying to protect decision makers with these numbers.
That's the, that's the idea, yes.
Thank you.
But when we talk about conservative numbers to our constituency, the number is conservative, meaning it's not going to the low. Not that.
Correct.
It's a low, the low end.
Right, right.
You're gonna hear that differently when you're writing the term.
What I'm trying to say is that we want to be able to confidently tell people that these numbers are dependable numbers because they ultimately are the decision makers. We're bringing this information to them.
So are we ready to move to motion?
I am.
Yes.
Okay, someone, I'm not looking at wording, sorry.
I think it starts to determine whether the town, oh no, that's the article, yeah.
That's the article.
Budget, capital projects. So, I would move, wait, no, no, no. That's the motion that would be in the warrant article. I would move the.
But we need that language and then we have to vote.
Yeah.
So the language, you want me to read the language?
Sure, go ahead.
To determine whether the town will vote to approve two million of debt authorization by the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee for access road reconstruction and parking lot of one hundred and four spaces or to take any other action relative thereto. And the motion would be that the town approves, oh, that's on the floor. That's not here.
That's a little, yeah, that's why I stopped.
So, so.
The motion is to create, to submit a warrant article to determine, et cetera, et cetera.
The motion would be that we approve the language of the article. I just.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
So that, I mean, I'm, I'm very sensitive to wording of these articles. Because this is for what? For design and construction of?
Or. The access road construction and, yeah, design and construction, the access road and the part, is that enough?
I think it's enough.
Based on what? I just wanna articulate what the things are.
We're talking about just what's on the brackets.
Right.
Because that's what got us kind of tangled up last, last year.
Well, but you're being very specific about the projects. It's the design and construction.
And that's the way to do it?
I believe it is. We, we got tangled up before because we were looking, I understand why. We were, you know, we were interpreting a word that hadn't been as specifically focused. That's what we got tripped up on last time. This time, you're being crystal clear about what those projects are.
Got it.
Design and construction of the road and the parking lot.
So, the article, I, I, I propose the article reads, "To determine whether the town will vote to approve two million dollars of debt authorized by the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee for the design and construction or the design and reconstruction of the access road and design and construction of parking lot of one hundred and four spaces on the high school campus or to take any other action there relative thereto."
Then you drop the hundred and four spaces.
I would drop the hundred and four.
Yes. Do I have to read it again? To determine whether the town, well, in ours, it'll be, to determine whether the town will vote to approve two million dollars of debt authorized by the Concord Carlisle Regional School Committee for the reconstruction of the access road and the design and construction of a parking lot on the high school campus or to take any other action relative thereto.
Yes, did you move to create the article?
I didn't, so moved.
Second.
And that would be at the approval of our attorney.
Yes, of course, we'll worded that appropriate and make sure that it works with a warrant.
So any further discussion of this? All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain from this.
Abstain. Okay, one abstention.
Do, do we need to, does it, would it be helpful to have a motion to allow wording change on that based on attorneys? Because we gotta sync up with Carlisle and.
I think I, well, that's what I said.
Joanna did say, contingent upon.
The edits of the, our attorney. I think that covers us.
Yeah, I think that covers it.
Is everyone else an aye?
Yeah, six ayes, one abstention. One aye, right, yeah. Okay. Hey, that looks like it concludes regional business, right?
I think so.
Wow.
No fair, no fair.
And our next, our next meeting is when? When we pick up this conversation about.
The next regional meeting is January twenty second.
So what do we not wanna wait on until January twenty-two? In terms of bringing community conversations forward? Because that, that's gonna gobble up most of January.
Right.
Some of that can be used to good advantage.
So we don't meet in the.
It's a Concord meeting.
We have a CPS meeting.
Would you like the regional committee to meet that day?
Well, if we need to, but no.
Yeah.
Don't miss them.
I would just either meet them as a region or discuss now what would be productive.
I, I honestly think that we either ask these guys if they can hold some time if we wanna hold it. But otherwise, I mean, candidly, we're gonna, oh, I have the joint meeting the twenty-second.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But there was, I had one the eighth, but maybe that's just the way I did mine.
Right now, it's a Concord meeting on the eighth.
So, should we make it regional?
I'm just one voice. What do you think?
I don't, I don't wanna make it regional unnecessarily. That's all I'm saying. And I think we would have a whole lot of, we've got a whole lot of work to do for both. And town meeting in April doesn't demand that work done in January. The planning takes place in Jan, it's really, this is my opinion, but the, the work of all the communicating and coffees and everything.
The time will be well-used, what you're saying?
I think so.
Okay.
For Concord and then the region and to separate it out, both which are gonna be a lot of work. And my experience has been the appetite for the town to get in those conversations is much closer to town meeting than January.
Yeah.
So I just don't wanna do it unnecessarily, but I, that's just my opinion.
I agree.
Of my experience.
It might be helpful if one of you commits to be the touch point to work with us on developing a plan. We can bring to you the twenty-second so that we make sure that January doesn't get away from us in terms of.
We can, we can.
Like a communication plan?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we can move to have a regional meeting. I just, I'm just throwing out my opinion.
No, I'd really would rather spend some time with someone helping to create a plan that we can bring you on the twenty-second rather than try to build a plan in the public meeting.
I'll work with you on a plan.
Okay. And the reason I say that is because then somebody's sort of nudging on us to make time for that in the throes of dark day-to-day life.
I'll be your nudge.
All right, got it.
Oh, I don't need another meeting.
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm just checking.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so we don't need to do any little planning right now, maybe a few minutes or?
I would prefer to get started with Joanna and Jared and such, frankly, after the holiday.
That makes sense.
Amen.
If you're okay with that.
Yes.
Yes, I would move to adjourn the region then.
All those in favor?
Aye, may.
Thank you.
Just abandoning us.
I know.
I feel much better. I know.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Yeah.
Thank you, you too.
Night.
Lori, find a day where you don't talk to anybody.
All right.
Nobody.
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 My family, maybe.
Your family's loud.
They're not allowed to bring anybody around.
Nobody has anything to do with Concord.
Well, they write this song in the kitchen.
Good night, Mary. So we, we're gonna keep moving?
Yes.
Yes.
This'll be a standing meeting, apparently?
Seven inning stretch.
I would like to move to the old business and CMS facility, I think. Heather, you had done a little legwork today.
I did a little legwork.
Start a conversation.
We didn't vote the high school budget article.
We didn't?
No. We voted the budget but not the article.
You sure?
I am sure. We were gonna do both tonight.
Oh, grab the.
Bob's going after them.
Oh, Mary's gonna love this one.
Oh, my gosh. That's a good catch if we didn't.
Yeah, you think.
We definitely didn't. We were gonna do them both. We voted the budget but not the article. I am a hundred percent sure.
Wow.
Yeah. We thought it was all smarter to do it at once, which apparently didn't prove true.
Which would make sense if we just did it.
Well, we've got, we've got it all queued up here.
Yeah, it's a quick vote.
Warrant articles, wow. Yeah, you know what? It is on that sheet and we all jumped race.
Hi, don't go yet.
So, Lumber?
We're gonna withdraw the motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I withdraw the motion to adjourn.
There you go.
Or call it back.
All those in favor of the withdrawal?
I think this calls back.
Call it back in order.
I'll call the regional school committee to order. And note, we're still being recorded.
Yes.
All right, I move that the town meeting article for the budget read is, "To determine whether the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of thirty-six million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars or any other sum for the following necessary and expedient purposes of the Concord Carlisle Regional School District for the fiscal year and in June thirtieth, 2020 or take any other action relative thereto."
Thank you.
Any discussion?
We didn't do that last week?
We voted the budget but not the article.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for talking.
Motion to adjourn to the region.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now you're in business.
We have the parking lot. Wow. Good thing you caught them before they were gone.
That was very timely.
You're welcome.
Very, very timely.
Wow.
Looked at my papers and swatted it.
It would have been interesting.
Oh, we had to.
It speaks to the multiple boxes we check off for each item.
Right.
Friday is the only thing we would have been able to do.
All right, so Heather.
Okay, so middle school.
She's gonna kick off our CMS facility conversation.
Kick off our CMS facilities, um, discussion, which leads right into the next one. So just back to where we are. Last time, we talked about the fact that since we haven't gotten into the MSBA pipeline, we need to think about bringing up the question in town of doing it ourselves. And we talked about putting a placeholder for now, warrant article into the warrant for a feasibility study. So that's where we are now. There are a couple of different ways we could do this. One of the things we talked about was that if we are to submit this article as a placeholder, then it would mean that over the next four months, we have to really engage the community in a very extensive conversation to start to gauge the appetite for doing this on our own. And we talked about the process that would go into that. So I started to sketch out a, and I'm gonna say, very high-level, rough draft of what that process would look like. Nothing that I even wanted to email or post, so I've just printed every some copies. I have a few that I'll bring over there also that we can look at. Oh, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Here, I'll leave a menu of those. Oops, maybe a couple more here, Card. We can look at this for reference in terms of what does it mean if we're going to submit this article? And then, here, that's for the rest of you guys. And then we can tear it apart and change it and add to it as we see fit if we go forward with this article. So, and I guess I'm, don't slap me if I overstep my bounds here, Joanna, but we, we can talk about what makes sense first, whether you wanna discuss first. Are we going to submit the article and make a decision clearly? And then we can look at the process that would be involved. Or we can look at, I can give you a quick, high-level first of kind of what I sketched out as the process so that that's part of the, the thinking that goes into whether or not we submit the article. Little chicken and egg, but.
Um, little chicken and egg, but I think, I, I'd be curious to hear a little conversation before what it would look like, how people are feeling about, you know.
Submitting it in general.
Right, having thought about it for the last week. What, take the temperature of where people are leaning.
Yeah, let's, let's do that.
Because everyone's like, I don't think so, then.
Right. I mean, I think I stated pretty, I'll start because I've stated pretty clearly what I thought in the past, but I feel very strongly that we should be submitting this article because I feel it's time for the conversations. So that's where I am.
You heard me weigh opinions on both sides. I'm prepared to move ahead on it. I don't think that we can make anything worse. I think we can only make things better by bringing this to the attention of the town. If it proves that we have to return to the town in another year, the case will be just more dramatic with more time lost to silly building stuff. Last week, or was it this week? I don't know.
Yesterday morning, both came into half an inch of water in a pretty good-sized science room because the radiator valve had, was gone.
The small problems are starting to blur for everybody into a bad experience for the students and the teachers there. And none of us can foretell the future other than to say this is all a sign that it's only getting worse. And we talked a week ago about what could happen that would be catastrophic. And the guess was those odds are low. But the very fact that we're talking about those odds says that more of this chronic, low-level stuff is only gonna get more chronic and grow in magnitude. So we have to move. I'm sorry to say it, which we didn't. I'd love to not risk a million four or whatever the number is gonna be and wait a year with high assurance the state would support us, but there's too much need out there. We're not the only ones in line. I think our hand is forced, regrettable but real.
You have anything?
I mean, it's, there's lots to be discussed here, needless to say. And by our decision to move this, we, all five of us, we have to really commit to a pretty rigorous effort.
One hundred percent.
And it isn't all just coffees and forums and so forth.
No, there's a lot more than that.
There's a lot more than that. And I don't know, I guess, how deep we wanna go tonight. You obviously have done some excellent work there.
Well, this is, this is indeed, this is a quick, you know, here's some of my, some, some thoughts on what needs to go into it. But yes, it's a.
But if, if we're of that frame of mind, then I, I'm in favor.
And I would just, I only wanna add just for the record that we have been turned down twice for support from the state. And every year, I don't know that your chances get any better. People have been in it a lot longer and given, you know, the radiator story and the septic story and every year, anything that we do, the costs of building, it will go up. And it's just seems that, that we've waited an awfully long time that we are now starting to compromise, compromise the educational experience dramatically for these kids and families as well as the staff who work in that building, those buildings. And I think we're at the crossroads of, it's time to make a case for it with the town and have that conversation. Because I think we, I think we really, I think all of us are convicted and we need to stand behind it. This is just, it's time for these kids and these, this school community to have better and hopefully have conversations with enough people to figure out how to do that as cost-effectively as possible for, gonna, you know, if we end up going it alone.
Yeah, exactly.
So, take us through a little bit of what you thought, given that we're, we're all in favor of moving forward. Given that we're all in favor of moving forward.
Again, obviously, this is bullet points, it was kind of a brainstorm format. Just put a little context at the beginning, which I'll read just kind of for the record here, so everybody's on the same page. That if we vote to submit a placeholder for this warrant article for the town meeting 2019, we will need to engage the community in a town-wide discussion regarding the possibility of self-funding a middle school project. I think this is important to point out, that we are not deciding right now we're definitely gonna move the article. We're deciding to submit the warrant article and we'll do a lot of research and have a lot of discussions over the next four months to determine what our moves will be at town meeting, whether we move it or not. It'll be an extensive process, and it will touch on, it will be a discussion about the long-term, but with an intermediate, short-term goal of understanding that interest and the appetite in conducting a feasibility study over the next year. So, process, just a bunch of the actual things that I think would have to happen over the next four months. I think it would make sense to, and all of these are debatable, by the way. So, tear this list apart, let's, let's go through it. It's really meant to be a list to start discussion. I think, though, that it could be useful to re-engage the facilities planning committee first, in the updates to them, that we've had several responses, you know, along the lines of, "Wow, this is disappointing that we haven't gotten funded, but let me know what I can do to help." They're very much behind us and ready to help. Re-engage Finegold Alexander, because they have, they've provided us with so much good information and can probably help us to refine it and present it in a more effective way. I think it would be worth looking into the educational visioning work that we were talking about a year ago and kind of put off to figure out the reconfiguration. We need to have a lot of discussions with the town, both administration and boards. Obviously, we should hold information sessions, forums to get input. I think we should give tours of the buildings. And I've actually already been talking with the League of Women Voters through their education committee. And they are very willing to host a forum that would be then promoted to everybody in town to, you know, just help us to host that conversation. And we can talk to other, you know, add to this discussing and networking with various groups in town. When I say forums here, you know, we can reach out to various groups in town individually and do small-group discussion sessions, large group, however it makes sense, but it's basically outreach. And then, just in terms of info to include, obviously, we're gonna have to put together kind of a presentation that anytime we go somewhere, it will be like our roadshow. We give people the update of the information and thoughts that we have so far and then ask for questions. There's a lot that will have to be included in there. Somehow we'll have to do it concisely. But we need to overview the steps that we've taken to date, the MSBA process and their feedback that we've gotten from them, all the Finegold Alexander information, well, not all the information, but their report and the highlights from it. The facilities failures over the past year and the risks of high repair costs, the funds that we spend annually on maintaining two buildings, visioning work, the educational opportunities if we actually had an updated facility, other Massachusetts schools that are also in need. I think that's big, because to Court's point, it really speaks to our chances of being funded some other year. There are a few other places, like Lowell High School out there, that are in great need and are gonna take, you know, half of the MSBA's funding in a year, but anyway, information there. Information about town financials, town building needs and plans, get into estimated costs and costs for households for meeting and household, all that kind of stuff. Give people a good feel of the overall process and timeline. And most importantly, answer the question, "Why now?" Because I think the biggest pushback and question that we will hear is, "Why not just wait another year? Submit it another year and try again." You know, it's only one more year. And I feel strongly that that one year could be pretty detrimental to us, but we're gonna have to answer that question very concisely and clearly. So, that's kind of my beginning of a list, but add to it, tear it apart. Would love any thoughts or feedback.
When I reconducting educational visioning work, if that's just sort of dusting off what's already been done to help inform the presentation process, I'd say, great, I might reward it. I don't think we would put anybody through that work until we knew that we had the feasibility study funded.
So, the reason we're talking about it in this order, I spent some time last week with a Brookline School Committee member and then extensive time on their webpage. And actually, even in my Duxbury experience, they had done the visioning work before the feasibility stage, because then they knew what they were aiming for.
You said in Brookline?
Brookline. So, if you go on the Brookline High School Expansion Project webpage, they are non-SBA, MSBA-funded, so it was particularly intriguing to me. By the time they got to the feasibility study at town meeting, they had the visioning of what they wanted their new school to bring them educationally. They had some basic concept. Now, they're expanding and renovating, cause they need, that's how they had to go forward. So, they had a little easier starting point for a concept, concept of what they wanted. And then they started talking and referencing finance. But there was a really solid package of, "This is what we could be if we had this facility." Not give us the money to go figure out what we're gonna be. And I, in talking with that school committee member, the combination of that and the way in which the financials were packaged, they sailed through town meeting. And I understand that's a different community, a different time and place, but it did loop me back to some of my work in Duxbury, where the visioning work was done two years prior to MSBA acceptance. Because they had to find what they were looking for and it drove the project from there on. So, that's the thought process between behind why we would do it.
Did they have help?
They worked with a consultant. We met with him once last year during, in the facilities planning committee. I think that is the work I continue on, whether I use that particular consultant, continue to debate. I have other people that got to know, that know our district already that might be beneficial. We were queued up and ready to go and then we got into, then MSBA didn't happen and we started talking reconfiguration, so we put it on hold. But it anchors the whole conversation going forward, if you know what you want your building to give you.
So, we didn't, we haven't, I thought we did some of that.
We've talked, well, we- We kind of teed it up and structured it.
Yep.
And then, as it was structured and we were about to really kick it off, is when we realized, "We gotta do this reconfiguration. If we're gonna put time into something, it has to be that." So, we kind of took that structure and slid it over for later.
But I think it's later.
I thought we had already done it.
No, we haven't done it.
And that's with this group, the committee you had queued that up with? The planning facilities?
Yes, the facilities planning committee had basically teed that off. And then it was gonna be more people involved. It wasn't just that group to do energy around visionary group.
State holders, parents, kids.
And to your point, while, you know, a year down the line or as we're actually designing the building, there may be more of that. There may be an extension of whatever visioning we can do in the short term. But in talking to Lori, if it's possible to do this visioning over the next couple months, then I think it would be a range value.
I think it is realistic. I think it is realistic.
And is it, in fact, more realistic, because we're picking up on the work that was done and as you say, got slid on.
Right, there was, we're not starting completely from-
And some other one.
People are already in place.
If we weren't starting from square one, somebody could well argue, push this thing off a year and do the visioning from scratch. We're not doing the visioning from scratch. We already know what we need, but there's still a process that we could take further.
Yep, right, yes. We have a structure, we have people in place, so it's kind of ready to say, "Okay, go."
I'm sure there's some pieces of work that were done in the reorg that are gonna be helpful here.
Oh, definitely. All the workers been doing it in the last year is gonna inform us. And then there's those pieces we still can't do because the facilities don't allow us. And I think that's the part to get flushed out. True teaming at the schools is just impossible with the way they're set up right now. And really, what you want is a pod of classrooms where the kids are in the same section of a floor, perhaps, where their team, all those teachers are in the same spot and they don't travel huge parts of the building and those teachers are close. And it makes a huge difference in the middle school mindset, which is just impossible when the schools were in.
So, and I'm envisioning it's like what we did for the strategic plan?
The process will be the same, only much more focused on middle school education.
What's that mean, like that level of kind of involvement and commitment and-
Definitely.
Beyond the committee?
Yes, well, beyond the facilities committee.
Right, then it broads from there after, okay.
Since the scope is a little more narrow, you'd probably condense the timeline down and target those people who need engaged.
Yep.
The other thing that I, there's a number of pieces of it in here, but I think it probably pairs its own line, which is the cost analysis of go, no-go. I mean, that's a pretty heavy piece of work to do it.
What's the cost analysis of?
Cost analysis of, you know, what are-
The building, the school, or the feasibility?
What are we spending to maintain the buildings? What are those risks?
Yep.
What's the cost to build a new building?
Yes.
What's the difference between doing it on our own versus with MSBA funding? How does it, how does it fit into where we are financially as a community right now? And the debt service loads, all that sort of stuff.
Yeah.
And I think that's one piece of work.
Yeah, and exactly, I kind of have high-level, you know, financial factors and estimated costs, but there are a lot of pieces to that. You're right, there's analysis and comparison and a lot of breakouts and that's gonna be a big piece of this, clearly.
I don't think Bob wants to do that.
Oh, good, I'm so glad.
I'm starting right after this meeting.
It seems like the committee's a good place for, in this reengagement, which you've already circled back, most of them wanna stay on, right?
I've heard from a lot, at least saying, "Let me know what I can do."
I mean, that's a question I have, is what sort of organizational body structure, or are there two or three, that we should employ in terms of getting our hands around everything?
So, it's a good question. We've talked about a couple of ideas. One is really engaging the facilities planning committee and asking them to drive this. I mean, I think we have, we as a committee have so many things on our plate. Obviously, I would be fully engaged in this.
Yep.
But, so I need to engage that committee now. And if they, we would need to revise the charge. So, we would probably do that at our next meeting, if we're gonna do that. But ask them to take this on and own it and lead it. We've also talked about the idea of asking some parents to just get involved and be part of the, both, I say parents, parents and other citizens, really, just citizens who are interested to get involved and help with the communication efforts. That could be tied into the facilities planning committee. It could be something that we ask the facilities planning committee to organize and implement. But I think we definitely need to leverage resources here, because
That's no question.
It certainly can't be the five of us.
Yeah.
I wonder if, I mean, you can see where there's a delineation between the preparation of materials, the underlying data and concepts, and then who's doing the outreach?
Right.
I think, I think there always has to be somebody from this committee
Absolutely.
involved in an outreach basis.
Yes, and when I say getting, getting a group of citizens kind of leading the charge on communication, I should have specified, thank you, I meant organizing it. And, you know, once you get things on the calendar, one of us shows up to be the face of this movement and talk about it and-
And somebody from the feasibility committee.
Exactly, somebody from the feasibility committee. And Lori and Jared, whoever are gonna be there. And Justin Cameron will be a big part of this. So, I think at all of these different events, we need someone from school committee, some one or a few people from administration. We all need to be represented clearly.
And there'll be some changes to the makeup, because we have new finance department, new principals, principal assistant principal.
Yep.
I think we'll need to give thought not only to what goes out in the form of information that has to be produced and brought forward. We need a good mechanism to know when and how to collect information back. So that it's, so that there's as much voice going both ways, information-seeking, opinion-seeking, because we wanna bring back as much community sentiment as we can, to guide us as we go.
Yeah, we do. I mean, one thing that we could adhere to process is some type of a, you know, a survey, an online survey that's up for a while.
So, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out how, provided we put forward an article, where we start in January with, you know, this process and where that, where the origin of the work starts to start to plan this out and figure it out? Cause I sort of feel like there are, this, this facilities planning committee is already up to speed on a lot, but perhaps it's re-engaging that group and actually creating a new committee called something different, like, you know, the feasibility, middle school or-
Middle school study committee.
Yeah, just, so it's actually, it's a new charge, it's a new group, and I have a suspicion, well, one, the replacements of people who have changed just because they're not here or here. And likewise, people on that committee who have new commitments and don't want-
New commitments?
Whatever it is.
And there may be new people that are involved.
And other people, so refreshed there. And also, you know, to even consider how to proceed with Finegold Alexander and all that. And the work that that group's gonna do should be,
Right.
I think, pretty clearly stated, if that's gonna be the group that drives it. And the other thing I sort of have in my mind, which I think we gotta do, and I'm not sure it's with that group, but it's with us, is when it says engage in the boards, I think that we really have to have conversations with the finance committee, the select board, Chris Whalen, as sort of, this is gonna be a town project, it's not a school project.
Exactly.
So, it needs to be very early and quickly have conversations what, where we are. Sort of, you know, and one of us may be sort of starting to have some of those conversations while you're doing-
And that should be us, not, we're not asking-
Right, right. And I think those kind, those kind, those couple of things, I think, are really important at the outset, to start to get the temperature, start to get the group together. Start, ideally, we start that process in January and whatever legwork we've done before we get to the eighth, and the eighth is kind of launching of some of those ideas and kind of getting those people all in the same conversation.
Exactly.
I mean-
To, you know, inform us.
Excellent point, I think. And I think what we, at the end of this meeting here tonight, what we should have is a timetable with the one, two, or three top priorities. And I think that's possibly and probably the top priority, is to talk to the finance committee and the select board and the town manager. Those three, you know, are obviously key. And the earlier we get feedback back, et cetera.
Yeah.
And there, we ought to highlight things that need some kind of a commitment from us. And Finegold Alexander is not on the hook to do any more work for us.
No, that's, we have to ask them to-
We should plan to vote something on that.
On the eighth, exactly.
On the eighth.
We're gonna ask them.
It seems to me we should know who the new members from the administration are gonna be and who is, who wants to stay on.
Right, yep.
And maybe replacements for them, so we can vote that for the eighth.
And, you know, should it be a new charge and a new committee?
Right.
Probably.
I think that's a, I think that's a good suggestion, yep.
I think it will be in any event, because it's gonna have a new charge and there's gonna be a recomposition.
Yeah. But I just, we don't have a lot of time. So, it's gotta be, we gotta vote on the eighth.
Well, I, I would, I think it's rushing a little the eighth. If the committee is to include more people, cause some drop, roll off and it's gonna be a new charge and name, I think it should be queued up for discussion. I'm not sure how much, I mean, I'm just being realistic about what's gonna happen between now and the eighth, you know, with people's holidays and stuff. There's some time to re-engage and have conversations.
I'm just curious, I know you've sent an email to the committee.
Right, so I will, after tonight, when we have officially decided what to do, I will then send them another update, saying, "This is what we've decided to do." And obviously, I need to highlight this information. If we've decided we're gonna create a new committee with a new charge, I will explain that and say, you know, and engage interests. Say, "We would love for any and all of you to be involved, who's interested," and then get a feel for how many new people we might need.
If any.
If any, right. Um, I know there's a little.
For this, for this run, between now and town meeting, we may not need new people.
Right.
Because we need people who are already up to speed.
Who are up to speed and are ready to.
Yeah, my only thing was to make, make sure you have them, you know, make sure they're all on board, or most of them, or whatever.
Right.
So we only lose two people, and I would say let's not even do that, just bring on whoever new is gonna be.
Right, they might just go as is, right?
You, Brian, you are on, you're on it already, right?
Brian is on it, we bring in Jared, right, exactly.
Great.
Justin was already, what's that?
You will have the administrators you need.
Right, we're not worried about that.
Joanna, revisit, revisit your comment, is there a concern that, uh, the, the, either the engagement or the perception of community engagement would be, uh, reduced if we move as fast as January eighth?
I just wanna be realistic about the time and then, if, if the engagement's there and we can have a charter, a charge clearly stated, and it's the same, pretty much the same group, I think it's possible, but we're between the eighth and the twenty-second, I wanna get it right, so, and it just is.
So I'm hearing this is, it's contingent on that confidence that we don't.
I guess, I mean, you guys are both.
And also, Tommy, I appreciate your comment because between now and the eighth, this is a long list for me that we're creating in there. And there's a big week of holidays in it, so.
My question is, this committee's gonna take on something pretty significant. We wanna make certain that we draw in the necessary talent and the, for both, you know, breadth and wisdom that we want to represent the town and the needs of this project. If the holidays, let's be honest, a lot of people are distracted over the next couple of weeks, if the holidays preclude that recruiting, I think we might regret it later if this thing were solidified on January eighth.
So, what if?
I would rather keep, keep it open and see if we can pull it off without this high level of confidence yet that we can't, and we don't know yet.
I think that makes sense, what if I send out a feeler, I'll see how many we have, if it's most of them, you know, we've only lost one or two and it's enough to say, this group should keep going because, because they're already up to speed, then we go with that. If it turns out we've lost a bunch of people and we need to recruit a few more, we could still for the eighth have a new charge and a general structure of membership, and if it needs to say, you know, two more community volunteers or a community volunteer and a teacher, then we put a couple in generically and maybe we approve it that way, but I think we can have at least a structure for the eighth, even if we need to fill in some names.
Cause we're trying to satisfy the calendar, which is not slowing down for us or for town being.
Right. Unfortunately, no.
And at the same time, trying to do this, do this right, with the composition that is, is as capable as, as this town can offer.
Right. Exactly.
So Laurie, I'm interested in your approach to the organizational structure that whatever we wanna accomplish gets done. You know, is, is it a reconfiguration of this committee, is it some other group, or, I'm just wondering what, you know?
I think you need this main committee, whatever word you call it, so that they're your center point, and obviously, the school committee, the administration, whatever parent energy gets going becomes all united in this one group. I think to that point too, you can then divide up some of these tasks among this group of people and send them out to do things and bring it back, given the talent I know is in that room, having met with them a couple of times.
Yep, no.
Um, and then, you know, there'll be things that strip off and quickly become administrative, and there's nobody else who can do it, there'll be things that are community outreach and we can, you know, guide people as to how to go forward with that, you know, it, it will start to split up, but I, I think this is the group to use.
So presumably, there'll be two school committee members on that.
I don't remember.
Oh, we're gonna have to do it myself.
There already are.
There already are, yeah.
Well, I mean, if we have a new charge, it'll be, you know, we're gonna vote on that.
Right, but I think what we're saying is ideally, we keep the same people in that group because they're all good to speak.
Yeah, no, no. Well, no question, oh, I'm not even, I'm not concerned about that, no, no.
Right, right, okay. So yes, we'll revoke that, but I didn't even assume that it would still be Laurie and myself.
So. So then, if any of the other three get involved, we got an open meeting law situation, right? So we gotta be really careful, would that limit our output?
I think it depends on how you organize yourselves, so I think when you wanna work as school committee members versus part of the two that are part of this, this other committee, then it's dividing yourselves up so that you've got your own projects to do without getting into open meeting law, so.
I, I think, you know, for, for the purposes of getting us going and you working on outreach, outreach to this group and a charge.
Right.
And coming back with the, with, on the aids, with, you know, what you've found out, what you've, and if it's been able to kind of come together, then great. I just, uh, you know, I think it should be sure it's representative enough if people have fallen off or whatever it is.
Right, yeah.
Also, it should be really clear to these people what the expectation is if they're still game, right?
Right, oh, absolutely, yes.
It's gonna be considerable time.
We're not gonna sneak our way up on this. There won't be a meeting to talk about what we're gonna do and we meet the next time.
Right.
And I think the, um, the outreach to select board, you know, the chairs of FinCom's select board and talking to the town manager should be, you know, I, I'm happy to do it in one of our.
Right, that should be, that should be school committee and administration.
Start those conversations.
Absolutely.
Um, right away in January too.
Right.
Yeah, exactly, yep.
So, and, um.
And to your point, Bob, in terms of all of us helping with this, I think we can all be involved as long as each of us are assigned tasks. Like I said, we, we discuss them here in public, um, and each of us can individually take a task and work on it.
Individually is the, is the key thing, because you got two, you, we got a problem, right?
Individually, exactly. Right, exactly, no, but individually, you know, we could say, Joanna, you're chair of the CPS committee, can you go talk to, you know,
Yep, definitely, yep. Yep. Yeah, no, exactly.
And Bob, you're liaison with the finance, you know, whatever it may be, but we can assign tasks individually.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep, good, okay.
I think it'd be helpful if you and I sat with this list and started to parse out what the committee would even talk about
Right, and work on that first, exactly.
versus what's automatically not gonna go to them and sort of target where that committee focuses.
Right.
Exactly, yep, yep, yep.
So, we should definitely do, we, we can sit down as we start to think about charge and breaking all this out.
Right, cause a lot of this will start to happen after we get some of these things in place.
Exactly.
And I only wanna keep, sort of as a, as a, a parallel runner of all of this, I, I could be wrong, but I think that there's very, um, I would, I would expect little, um, I, I would expect most to, um, understand that the, this needs to happen, but for many, it's gonna be what it costs and the cost of that, so, and that will be the question, you know, yes, okay, I don't want, you know, wet classrooms in the morning, but I, you know, I can't afford it, whatever.
Right, but how much is it gonna cost?
So that's gonna be also a, a, something we have obviously narrow over a long time, but I, that's what I suspect are gonna be.
I think so.
Around more than anything.
You're right, the general, general tenor of this conversation is not gonna be, we don't need a new middle school. I don't, we're not gonna meet many people who say that.
Right, that's.
I'm sure that almost everybody we talk to is gonna say, yes, we need a new middle school.
Yeah.
But the question is, as I said before, why now, what, do we re, we need it, but do we really need it this year?
Yeah.
You know, do we really need to? Why can't we wait another year and try again?
Yeah. Yeah. And relying on.
That's gonna be the conversation.
Yeah, and relying on, you know, Duxbury or Rupliner, people who've done it, and having that, um, you know, not reinventing the wheel, when people have already worked hard to do this.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, that should be on our list here too, outreach to other districts, I mean, this, we've already started, I know, exactly.
Yeah.
Oh, I've got this to play this. We gotta visit some middle schools and find ourselves what it could be, cause you get here and you can lose track of it, I was thinking of that last week, and like, wow, when, when I think of, Justin and I both open middle schools and, wow, yeah, yeah.
Oh. Yeah.
That's what we want.
It is.
Well, so I, I would, I propose we look at the warrant articles, cause we're pretty clearly gonna make some next steps and.
Okay. Great.
So, did, did we agree what's gonna take place at, uh, December, hey, at January eighth meeting?
So, what I took down was basically an outline of a new committee with a charge and members, even if some of them are generic, not named, um, and an outline of what we would like to ask Feingold Alexander for, because that's something that we could then discuss and approve moving forward that night, hopefully, to read that to them.
Right, having a conversation, yeah.
We need to make sure they're available.
And make sure they're available, right, but, um, I, I, hopefully, it would be them because they have the history, I mean.
Right.
This isn't something we wanna put out to bid, it's not a new project, it's follow-up on an existing project.
No, no.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think it would be much, I mean, I don't, we're not looking to spend a lot to speak with them, but, you know.
Right.
But to start to define what that would be.
And I will start my outreach to some of the chairs of the boards that we've mentioned and, and Chris Whelan.
Yeah, I think we should.
To the extent that I can, have conversations.
That's great.
And you and I will meet and start to parse out.
And we can start to, right, exactly. And I was, I was not actually assigning you that, Joanna, earlier, I was just making an example of the fact that we could assign things to people.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But I think we should, and so, yeah, we'll sit down and figure out who does what, and we can do, start the outreach
Yeah.
and, and all of that should begin before the eighth, definitely.
I think those are the top, top things to do.
Those are the top priorities.
Yeah, good, okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Great, so if we, we turn to the, anything else, sorry? Just, no, turn to the, um, warrant articles.
Yep.
Oh, what do you know, the first one is to.
Surprise, surprise.
So.
Can I go in a different order?
You want to punch in? Be glad we came.
We, we have a number.
Episode there, three minutes ago, going the other order.
I know, exactly.
Do we have a number, do we need this?
We will need a number tonight.
One point five million is our recommendation for the feasibility study.
Um, all right, so I guess while we're on the topic, someone wants to move this, like.
I'm gonna read the article, please.
Yep.
So, um, I would make a motion that we vote a warrant article to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the school committee for a feasibility study to consider the construction of the new middle school, which may be located at eight thirty-five Old Marlboro Road, Concord, Mass, the present site of the Sam Moore Middle School, or take any other actions relative thereto.
Second.
So, just to be clear, the motion has the amount in it, but the article doesn't, is that how it goes? Everybody, yes?
Wait, Warren, um, doesn't the warrant have to have a number which sets the ceiling?
Yeah, it does.
And then below that, you could always move it down, but to have no number feels like the sky's the limit.
Yep.
It does sound.
Yep.
I don't understand that, I don't know that that's gonna fly, that's my.
Okay, I'll, I'll make an amendment.
Yep, okay. And then, it's gotta have a number.
I would amend, well, I will strike the previous motion and make a new motion, that we vote a warrant article says to see if the town will vote to appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, an amount not to exceed, amount of money not to exceed one point five million dollars to be expended under the direction of the school committee for feasibility study to consider the construction of the new middle school, which may be located at eight thirty-five Old Marlboro Road, Concord, Mass, the present site of the Sam Moore Middle School, or take any action relative thereto.
Can you add the input from the attorney?
Contingent upon the approval of our council.
Contingent upon the approval of council.
The wording.
So we can word it.
To add to that.
The wording, contingent, yes.
Right, exactly, and second to the new motion.
All right, everybody comfortable, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Let me pause, no, so it passes, uh, as the article language, we're gonna continue on the article language and then vote the articles together as, for the warrant, right, I got that right? Or do we just do that?
Wait, what?
We just did that.
I, I don't know if we are, we, well, we have to vote, did we do, if we voted that that's, the article is what you're gonna put forward, not, not just the language we're voting on, okay?
One voted.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
All right, whoever has the energy for the next one, let's look at the annual capital article and motion. Do you wanna speak to anymore about the, um?
Sure, the reminder that this is.
Just a reminder, yeah, the.
Sure, this is the, uh, town, this is funds that the town reserves in their capital plan for the CPS schools. Um, our recommendations, as you'll recall, after really trying to revise and rent it, upgrade the capital plan, we're recommending two hundred thousand for a phone system, um, a small amount, about forty-five thousand for security upgrades and the remainder to the two middle schools for upgrades to painting, lighting, room reconfigurations, things to support essentially the, the learning environment and the reconfiguration. A good chunk of that is a science lab at Sam Moore, and so we have fully, fully functioning science labs for all of the eighth grade science classes, so. Um, it's really about supporting the reconfiguration and building that learning environment up, but the expectation that it's a, the money we're putting in now is the money we're gonna put in for the next five years, not believing we will be there for the launch.
Yeah, I think that's really important, we're, we're, this is our investment in now the work of the next four or five years to get the
That's right, right.
new school and not be putting more money in, ideally.
So, I'll make a motion that we put in the warrant, an article to determine whether the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, or authorize a town treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow money by the issuance of bonds or notes under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, the sum of nine hundred thousand dollars or any other sum to be expended under the direction of the school committee for remodeling, construction, reconstructing, or making extraordinary repairs, including original equipment and related work in various Concord public school buildings and further, that any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by the vote, unless any such premium applied to the payment of the cost of the issuance of such bonds or notes may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter forty-four, subsection twenty, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed, borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount, or take any other action relative thereto, subject to approval of wording by our attorney.
Second, I keep getting the easy part of this one.
Any other comments, or, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and finally?
Uh, I would make a motion that we include an article in the warrant to determine whether the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of thirty-nine million, three hundred ninety thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars, or any other sum for the following necessary and expedient purposes of the public schools of the town for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty twenty, or take any other action relative thereto, subject to the approval of the wording by our attorney.
Second.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so the articles pass as articulated and we voted them, and we are now at the, at adjournment, we did vote the enrichment fund, so.
On the last one?
Actually.
What?
Do we, isn't there another article there?
Yes, that's.
Oh, did I miss one?
We're looking, no, it's not in the packet, so we wanna be sure to see if it's available on last week's agenda. It's the revolving account.
Oh, it's the revolving fund.
Oh, I think that's where I got it from, from last week's agenda.
All right, I'll find it.
Cause I didn't see it.
Sorry, it's not attached.
I would have that, I think, right here, so.
It is on last week, so if you go to the warrant article section of last week's agenda, it's the last page to recommend establishing the fund.
Yep. Yep.
Do you have it?
Motion, I got it, I move, uh, this one on, I move to establish on July one, two thousand nineteen, a preschool revolving account in accordance with.
It's not the preschool.
No, you're going, if you go to the CPS warrant articles from the December eleventh meeting, there's a memo from Jared to me.
Establish use of school property fund?
Establish use of school property fund.
Oh, oh, oh.
It's the final one of the warrants.
It's the last page of the warrant article.
So, is the motion to that first paragraph, or the whole thing?
Do you see that? Is, is Laurie looking at it?
Yes, I am looking at it, I'm reading quickly to get an informed answer.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would read it.
I would move, and this is a warrant article, right? Yeah. I would move that we include the following article in the warrant, uh, I recommend the town establish a fund to collect fees for incidental renting of, for our school property. Fees collected for incidental renting of school property would be deposited to the use of school property fund and be made available for the school committee to expend without further appropriation on expenses incurred in making school property available for such use. The town receives approximately fourteen thousand dollars each year.
You could probably stop there, there's some information.
And the article would be to determine whether the town will vote to adopt, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section seventy-one, the use of school property fund.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon approval of the warning by our attorney.
This one's pretty tight, but never.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Simply to assure anybody curious, uh, these expenditures, like any others, would be, uh, very, very public and very available.
Yeah.
Yeah, the warrant.
E- even though we don't need subsequent budget approval. Even though we don't need subsequent budget approval, or, excuse me, additional budget approval.
Okay, all those.
I seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now.
Any other hiding warrants?
Any other hiding warrants? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Two for two.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.